Another meeting, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Please raise your hand to be recognized. Limit your comments to three minutes, and if you could, state your name for the record. So, anyone with— Mr. Whittleton?
The meeting, this is Miss Bell. It struck me that when public outreach was discussed, it became an administrative item, where when you were talking about an ad hoc committee regarding land use, stakeholders needed to be involved. I certainly hope that when you deal with stakeholders, you're dealing with citizen stakeholders and not representatives from Bremerton and Silverdale. Thank you.
Other public comment? Anyone wishing— Ms. Taylor?
I'm Leslie Reynolds-Taylor. This is Ian Wilhelm. He's the treasurer of our Skate Park Association, and I happen to be president of the Skate Park Association. And we started a new adventure, putting hydroplanes out here in Sinclair Inlet. We want to call it Sinclair Thunder Boats. It would be scheduled for May the 21st and 22nd of 2016. It's the Armed Forces Weekend. We're planning at this point to have approximately 40 to 45 raceboats, going from Grand Prix's that are at 180 miles an hour, down to the five liters, the 2.5 liters, one liters, and also the vintage boats. They plan to be— they'll be just doing a demonstration. They don't actually race. They just go around the track and show themselves off. The activities for the weekend would be vendors and possibly both air and water-type demonstrations. And we're gonna have—we'd like to have the vendors down there on the Port Orchard waterfront, as well as possible beer gardens as well. There'll be two areas that will be the pits. They will be at the lighthouse in their parking lot, and the other one would be at the ramp down in downtown Port Orchard, the city ramp down there, boat ramp. And then there'll be other areas that will be enclosed because of the insurance issues with—not issues—the insurance policy that the American Power Boat Association has. It's about a $5 million policy, and some of the areas need to be enclosed to protect the other people, protect the people that go out there. The other areas would be the park, where the gazebo is maybe having a— some bands out there throughout the day. The north breakwater at the marina will be an area that will be pretty prime. It's actually the best seating area probably in Port Orchard and Bremerton. And we are including both Bremerton and Port Orchard into the activities. Mayor Lent, as well as all of you, most of you have heard this speech before. And so, we have approval from many of the officials, Jan Angel and Derek Kilmer and Mayor Lent is working very hard with us as well. The other area will be the Bremerton Conference Center has scheduled the third floor to overlook the races as well. On the last page, on the last page, you'll see what the course is. That course was literally designed for—by the Navy. They requested that. And that area of red that you see on there is just an area that they—the boats will go through. There'll be no loitering, if you will. So, the course is in one area, and then the boats—if there's pleasure boats that want to go through, they can go through that area.
So, out of respect for our public comment period, would it be helpful if—I know Ms. Taylor has a very nice PowerPoint presentation. She's gone to various service clubs. Would we like to have that PowerPoint presentation as one—as a presentation here at a council meeting, potentially in February? That be the desire of the council? Okay? Could we maybe with Brandy? Brandy's out sick, but if we could schedule maybe that with Brandy or contact myself?
Absolutely.
And we'll get you on our—one of our February council meetings as a presentation?
Very good. I'd be glad to. We both would.
All right? Sounds good. Thank you for what you're doing. Other citizen comments?
I just have a question. Will there be a public comment allowed during discussion of the—
There typically is not, so now would be the time if you want to make a public comment regarding something on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. My name is Charles Kragear. For the record, president of West Sound Landscape Supplies, South Bethel Road and Highway 16. I want to comment on the urban growth boundary revision that's been proposed or countered back, and we intend to stay. I don't know if you have a full-size—
We do, and that's part of—it's gonna be part of our discussion—
Yeah.
—here a little bit later.
I just want to comment that—that those of us that have had a chance to look at it, we just got it yesterday afternoon, it looks—it looks much better from our point of view. We've got a little room for growth now. I want to thank the city council for whatever happened behind the scenes or with the letters you've written and the support you've given us. And I also want to appeal to—and go on record is to say that I believe that we should pursue annexation, at least in the planning stages of it, all the way out to the freeway interchange or the freeway overpass. And I propose that we have a study time or a study session or work study, whatever you call it, on future proposed gateway projects that would go along with it. And we also would appeal for help in getting sewer and water out there, adequate water, for fire flow. So, there's some—to us, it seems like an uphill climb. We've already attempted it with the county, but I think with all of us working together, it would really be a worthwhile project for the city. I wouldn't mind volunteering for a committee like that and helping any way I could.
Thank you for your comments. Other citizens' comments? Mr. Murphy?
So, I have here the supplemental environmental impact statement for the comprehensive plan update. It's an interesting read. To pull a few numbers out, the alternate one, which is the no growth, no change, no change, allows for $4,500—$4,500, $4,500 new jobs produced. The alternative two, 2863. Alternative four is 2658. Alternative four, which is the preferred method, is nothing. I don't see how anybody, anywhere, can make a decision. There's nothing in here. There's no supplements on alternative number four. What is the impact of alternative four? I know we get back some of the Bethel, but on the other hand, are we cutting off Mile Hill out in that direction? So, you know, I know that you guys have an uphill battle, and I agree that whatever you guys have done to get us back this much is great. We need more. I was told when I went to a meeting out in Olalla with Commissioner Greedo that it is a matter of political will as to who's gonna win this battle on the UGA. There are no statistics and figures for alternative four, the preferred alternative. I know with some of them, it calls for 904 acres of the city of Port Orchard UGA being shrunk, okay? I would really encourage you and encourage the city—the county commissioners, before they make a final decision, to try to get the rest of the numbers, to get the rest of the—you know, what effect does alternative—the preferred alternative have on the city and the county? I would like to point out that two weeks ago, another young man was hit by a car on Bethel at a crosswalk. I know this is a state issue as much as it is as a city issue, but it is something that sooner or later, somebody is going to—somebody's gonna need to address. So, I just wanted to point that out, so, thank you.
I believe it was on Bay Street, though, wasn't it?
Bay Street, not Bethel.
Not Bethel.
What, Bay Street? I'm sorry, yes, it was on Bay Street. Two—one crosswalk down from where my son was hit.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to—Mr. Anderson, please step forward.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Gary Anderson for the record. Couple things is—I'm excited, as can be, about the prospect of having a boat race out in front of Port Orchard to go along with our car show in Port Orchard. I mean, that's just gonna put us on the map. I think—I think anything we can do to get behind that is a home run. Second thing, at the work-study session on the UGA deal, the county staff indicated that if the—the properties were re-designated as urban low residential, that there would be an opportunity to—or a foot in the door, anyway, to designate—for a commercial use on those properties if somebody came forward with a proposal. I'm not so sure that's the case. I don't trust it, and I think it needs to be verified, because the question was asked at the meeting whether if somebody had a business that was—needed some expansion room, could they expand? And the question was answered, yes, if you came forward with a proposal with the urban low designation. Just needs to be checked out. Just want to caution you about that. The other thing is I think this—I'm happy with the map that the county put out as a preferred alternative, because it does continue to keep the UGA extended down to the overpass. I think the city should take up a long-range look at supporting that strongly, because the solution to the Cedric Road and the Cedric problem is to open up the off-ramp off Highway 16 onto Bethel Road. Our—you know, that's the direction the trucks come from to supply the South Kitsap area, right? And so, coming up Cedric Road is very difficult for those trucks. The next—they usually choose to go up to the Tremont exit. So, as a commerce decision for Port Orchard, we need to try to influence the legislature to open up that as a—as a primary access into Port Orchard, take the pressure off Cedric, and it'll open up commerce. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else with—Mr. Petro?
Brian Petro, hometown troublemaker, instigator, and conniver, 171 Shamrock. I challenge you to fight for our current urban growth boundary hands down. Kitsap County government has cost the South Kitsap community millions and millions of dollars in sales tax revenue and property tax revenue by cutting back and playing games with us since—the Growth Managed Act, never giving us an urban growth boundary. It took us years and years to get it, and finally, we get one, and they want to reduce it, after many of us who represent clients have annexed into the city because they want to get their properties developed. I was very disturbed a couple of years ago when some of these clients got letters from the city saying, "Oh, do you want to go from commercial back to residential?" We have people that have invested lots of money, tax dollars, year after year, to keep their commercial properties. It took them seven years to approve the plan for Home Depot. In the process, loans come to town, they buy the property, get a plan developed, they're done in 24 months. We cannot allow us to lose these urban growth boundaries. It costs us money as a community, and I challenge you, if you don't work, we should take it to litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petro. Anyone else wishing to comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. So, we're on to approval of the agenda. Do we have any proposed amendments to the published agenda?
Yes, we do have one. I'd like to add a discussion on identifying a date for a city council retreat.
So, that would—7F, council discussion of council retreat date. Tina, did you have—raise your hand?
I was gonna ask for the same thing.
Wonderful. Any other amendments? Mr. Clausen, did I hear you whispering that you wanted to move the collective executive session to a different point in the agenda, or is that just—
Well, I—I think for the benefit of the audience, if we were to move that as the last thing on the agenda, then people aren't sitting here while we're in the back listening to the issue.
Okay, so, actually, and I think I've misstepped here, we had an amendment already that we need to vote on before I ask for another amendment.
Yeah, I haven't made a motion yet.
Okay, so, that's why you were silent. So, we have item 7F, council retreat dates. Do we have a second? And any discussion on that item, adding that item to 7F? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move, then, we move the collective bargaining executive session to the end of the business items.
Okay, the motion. Anybody wish to second that?
Yes.
Second over here.
Ms. Ashby, I believe? And a discussion of that? Seeing none?
I guess under discussion, is it appropriate to put it there or after the committee report? So, that—are we intending to have action after the executive session? So, it's more for information? So, with the permission and a second, I'd like to move it to the last thing on the agenda.
Take citizens' comments, and then we go into executive session? And then—then adjourn our meeting, okay? Should be the very last thing we do. Second, okay with that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move the executive session to the end of our meeting. Any other amendments or additions to our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Got a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Motion and a second? Ms. Lucarelli got that second in?
Aye.
And any discussion of the consent agenda? Seeing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We don't have any presentations. We don't have a public hearing this evening, and we are on to item 7A, which is me, and I'd like to introduce Sharon Cates, our new interim city attorney. She's sitting over here, next to Mr. Bond. And I would just like to briefly, if I could, kind of go through the remainder of the council and the public, the process that we went through to engage Ms. Cates. So, in December, we issued a request for qualifications, or RFQ. On January 8th, we closed the RFQ with 11 applicants. Councilmember Ashby, HR Coordinator Deb Howard, and I reviewed those applicants—applications, looking for packages that spoke to code development, land use matters, contract law, Public Records Act, and Open Public Meetings Act. Using this criteria with a bias to firms that had experience with code development, we screened applicants down to four firms. The four finalists brought forward were McGavitt Graves, Lighthouse Law Group, Porter, Foster, Rorick, and Ogden Murphy Wallace. Last week, Councilmember Kachardi, Councilmember Ashby, Public Works Director Dorsey, Development Director Nick Bond, Treasurer Alan Martin, and I interviewed those four finalists. I believe we could have hired any of the firms that applied or we interviewed, and many of the applicants that weren't—but I felt we had—a有一些very specific needs related to our code development. We have some needs we need to address there, and—as well as our general municipal law services. So, tonight, I'd like to introduce our new interim attorney, Sharon Cates, from Lighthouse Law Group. The interview and I—committee and I felt she was best suited to meet the needs of the city of Port Orchard. Additionally, due to the size and structure of her law firm, they also offered the best value from our group of finalists. So, at this point, I've named Lighthouse Law, and Sharon Cates is our interim city attorney, and we started the—started negotiating a contract. I brought forward with you tonight to the dais an interim city services contract for your approval. Really, I see two options for this evening. One is a two-step process where you could potentially confirm Lighthouse's appointment as city attorney, and then I—in a future date, no more than 60 days out, and I hope in the next couple of weeks, that I would bring back a contract for approval. The other option could be that it's a one-step process where we can—we leave Ms. Cates as a interim attorney, and that we confirm the appointment and the contract in one step. So, that's what I have, and Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I think it is certainly appropriate that we confirm your appointment, but I also think it's important that even on an interim basis, that we have an agreement that specifies the term. I'm perfectly comfortable and would recommend that we do both. We approve your interim agreement and with the expectation that you would come back with —you get a different document in 60 days for our approval, so, yeah, that is acceptable. I would so moved that we approve the mayor's appointment, the city attorney, and I'm not sure—I guess we could ask the new city attorney if it's appropriate to do two items in one motion. I think it would be, but—
(inaudible).
The contract, approve the interim agreement, so I would include that in my motion that we approve the interim agreement as well.
So, your motion is to approve the interim agreement and confirm the appointment?
Yes, to confirm your appointment first, and then to approve the interim agreement all in one.
With the expectation in no less than 60 days, I would be bringing back the contract, which makes this agreement null and void.
That would be outside of the motion, but that would be our expectation on what you shared with us earlier.
Okay. Sir, so we have—is that—that was—that was a motion?
I'll second that.
There's a second, and now it's time for discussion. Ms. Lucarelli?
So, we're not going to do it in a two-step process, then? You're not suggesting the two-step process?
No, I'm—I'm throwing it all into one motion, that we—we approve his appointment.
As an interim?
Confirm his appointment and approve the interim agreement.
So, he is—he is—his motion is for the two-step process?
The interim?
If she is—would be the—
I just wanted to clarify.
Confirming as the city attorney?
Different motion, yeah.
This is the one I wanted.
And I'll bring back a contract for later date.
That we have reviewed.
That's what I would like. Yes, thank you.
Other comments? Questions?
I support what has been spoken to already, John Pippely. I think it'd be worthwhile. We haven't had a chance to look at this, but I think going back with a contract would be a wise and judicious move. I have confidence in how the system went in selecting, but I think that would be wise to do.
Mr. Martin?
I would like to point out that there is a contract in place for the labor—union labor negotiations, which is a separate contract that isn't encompassed into—which stays in place, and then this is for the general attorney services. So, there's actually two contracts now out there for attorney services, which will be combined into the mayor's proposed contract that comes back to you.
Yeah, that's what I would want to make sure, since our labor contract is with the same firm currently. But when we're done, we'll have one contract that covers all legal services.
That's what we've discussed, that we would come back with one agreement that covers all of services.
And the only other thing is maybe is some level of comfort is that there's a 14-day notice termination, so—
Yeah, it's just some high points. That's on page two, that we could—for some re—if—if we couldn't come to agreement on a contract, we can get out of this in 14 days. Other high points, there's some indemnification on the side of the law firm. We've already got copies of their insurance, and that's really about it. We are—I mean, it behooves me to get this done as quick as possible, because what we're discussing is a retainer at a reduced rate, and current—we're gonna operate under the firm's hourly rate until we get that agreement in place, so we'll be making that happen as soon as we can.
That's great.
Got a motion and a second? Any—no other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, item 7B, adopting a resolution confirming a mayoral appointment to the Planning Commission. And Rhian, do you have a staff report for us?
Thank you. Annually, the city clerk reviews the expiring terms of or vacancy of members of the various boards and commissions. The mayor has appointed Mark Trenery to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2019, and is seeking council's confirmation of this appointment.
Thank you. Ms. Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment to the Planning Commission as set forth in the resolution presented.
Second.
Mr. Donnell, and second. Having discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries. We are on to 7C, approval of January 7th special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve the regular meeting of January 7th.
It is a special meeting?
Oh, special meeting. Special meeting. I've went one page too.
It does say regular, but it means to say special.
Motion and a second? Any discussion of those minutes? Do we have anyone that wasn't in attendance that plans to abstain?
I'll need to abstain.
Okay. And all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? And we have one abstention. We are on to 7D, which is the approval of the January 11th special meeting minutes.
I move that we approve January 11th, 2016, special meeting minutes.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of those meeting minutes?
I'll abstain again as well.
Thank you.
And I will be as well, since I'm also abstaining.
So, all in favor of approving the January 11th special meeting minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have two abstentions. We are on to 7E, the discussion of the Port Orchard urban growth area. And we brought forward this evening and on the dais and putting—put up on the projector, we have two maps. One is the no-change alternative, and the other map is the—the map which is the now preferred alternative that the staff has brought forward, which I think, as we heard from Mr. Kragear, is—it's a step in the right direction, but I'm still not sure it's —it's what is best for the city. So, that—at that point, I will open up—this point, I'll open it up to the council. I don't know that we need a motion for any discussion on this. I just think we need to probably discuss this issue and potentially direct staff or our attorney to write a letter to the county potentially.
I have a couple of comments. Quite interesting, back in December, when we first learned of this, and there was—there was no notice given when we first saw the original alternatives. I was pleased that the council took the action they did to write a letter and say, "Whoa, slow down, stop. We've got to be able to not only have us analyze this, but to have, you know, the different residents analyze this." We did write that letter. We did invite them to a—to a work-study session here last week, and it was interesting in that work-study session that they'd already moved so long that staff was already kind of had, you know, Plan B already—already set, and they were gonna release that, what, three days later, and now we're seeing, you know, what that is. It was interesting, they didn't bring that during the work-study sessions. We could have had, you know, more of a concise discussion on what they already planned to alter, and, you know, basically, again, just kind of keeping us one step behind. It is evident that during their their public processes and some of these public meetings that they're going to have—I mean, ultimately, this is a county issue, that I think we need to make sure that our citizens are aware of this and to go and testify at these if you have concern. I couldn't agree more that this is going to be a battle, and we want to show, you know, what our intent— know, what our intentions are and what our will is for our city, and try to stay in control of that. And I would, you know, fully, fully would like to support the idea of the plan that says do nothing, to be honest with you. I think, you know, we have a small city, it's a jewel, and I would hate to see us, you know, concede more things to other parts of the county when they haven't really explained the reason why they want to do that, and I'd like to hold firm, to be honest with you.
Mr. Bond? Wouldn't it be possible to put the map up, the other map up? I think it's, it's just easier to follow. So, and what we're seeing here...
But it doesn't show densities.
It doesn't show densities, that's true. It does show what the county is now proposing as their new proposed alternative. So the colored letters from A through F are what they're proposing to remove, and then the blue is what they're proposing to leave as our urban growth area.
Isn't it odd, though, that they don't show densities? You know, all those different maps, there was different densities, so I'm wondering what their proposed densities would be.
I think it's safe to assume that those are going to be rural designations, probably one of five.
Not all of them.
Well, I think we're looking at E is probably going to be rural residential, is that?
As was C.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Claussen.
A couple of things. One of the areas that I certainly feel ignorant on, and that is what was presented at the work-study, dealt with a whole lot of numbers, and we have to reduce this because of this number needs to be smaller, and so on and so forth. I don't know if we've had the opportunity to verify, not that I don't trust the county, but to verify that that is in fact the issue, and that the numbers that are, that were suggested are what we need to deal with, and whether or not we've had the ability to look, excuse me, at what they're proposing to see if it complies with those numbers. I have general concern still over some of these areas, again, as I mentioned the other day, I think it was, the properties on the west side of Sydney, from 16 all the way down to, you know, the city around the Sydney-Sedgwick intersection, I personally think needs to remain. And I still have some concerns over even the portions of D out on Bethel that have been proposed to be eliminated. I don't have the numbers to back it up, and I hope that we'll have legal advice or counsel that can help us with this decision, but as it stands right now, those are the two areas that I still have concern about being eliminated.
Ms. Ashby?
Mr. Mayor, the first thing I would like to do in, is I would like to compliment Commissioner Garrido in that when the maps were first presented, and I believe it was November 6, it was a Thursday and a Friday, and many of us were shocked to look at the alternatives because we had not seen them before. And the mayor and I contacted Ms. Garrido, and she then made arrangements to have her staff come to our work-study, and she also held a number of community briefings throughout South Kitsap. Anyway, I just thought that she did meet our needs immediately. That does not mean that I'm satisfied with the results of what we're looking at. I happen to agree with Mr. Claussen in that I believe the property down Sydney, and I'm not sure exactly where Pottery starts and Sydney ends in that area, but what we're looking at on our map is C. I believe it's important that that remains in our UGA. I believe that, and on their map, I believe they're taking that section and they're making it, it's even, if I'm looking at these green, these shades of green correctly, they are taking that property and making it rural protection, meaning one dwelling unit per 10 acres, and that's a commercial corridor for us. So I'm not supportive of the proposal in their preferred recommended on that. I believe it needs to stay in our UGA, and I believe it should be compatible with the zoning that our city has along Sydney and Pottery. I'm not as concerned about A. It is appalling to me that they have had that zoned industrial all these years, because if you have spent any time there, it is not industrial. The section on Bethel, south of Sedgwick, that they're proposing to leave in, right now, it's within our UGA, and it is zoned mixed use. They are, they have changed their proposal a little bit in that they are keeping some commercial zoning in that area. However, it's zone mixed use now, but they have a great deal of it as urban low, meaning it's five to nine dwelling units per acre. And again, going down Bethel, I believe we need to hang on to commercial designation in some form down there. So those are my basic comments. If we have to do negotiation, I would lean more in favor of losing F than removing that from our UGA than losing C and the zoning that they're looking at down Bethel.
So my first observation about the Mile Hill proposal, urban low, is that creates a whole bunch of non-conformities, and I think that's a step in the wrong direction. You have a red commercial swath that is now painted with a yellow residential swath, and that creates a series of land use conflicts for those folks if they want to expand their business. So I think that's important to understand. With respect to Area C, I'd like to see that that stay a commercial corridor. However, if we feel like we're going to lose on that, I believe it's most important that we keep a corridor of commercial properties along the road frontage, and that conceivably, if we were going to lose on that, that those properties to the west or to the rear would become residential. I think that's important. And I also concur with Beck about trying to do whatever we can to look at the areas represented around D, that that is a corridor that we should try and maintain. And also, I'll just chime in on A. That area has been presented in the past with the opportunity to apply for a site-specific redesignation. They chose not to, it was a couple thousand dollar effort. This is many years ago, when somebody, I think, wanted to build a house up there, but I think that is actually doing the right thing.
Other comments?
Well, I realize that all council hasn't spoke yet, but I happen to agree with, I believe it was, our resident troublemaker and however else you present yourself, Brian, but I believe that we will probably need to engage our new interim attorney to write a significant letter, and perhaps even represent us at a public hearing. I would be supportive of that.
Other comments? Mr. Chang?
Well, one thing that I realized at our last work-study was that the county doesn't really want to do this in terms of rezoning and shrinking, but they feel compelled to. I do believe they are the lead agency, so they would have more of the sway over who gets to adjust our urban growth area. I'm looking at it a little differently, seeing these six numbered or lettered areas. I share what I'm hearing from most of you, which is that we really want to keep as much of C and D as possible, especially the portions that are close to the highway or what we feel will be our commercial corridor. Now, if you had me choose between C and D, I don't know if I'd be able to do that. I'd have to go look at the areas, but from the map, I'd say both of those would be our top priorities, is keeping as much of C and D as possible. So I actually disagree with you on F, I'm sorry.
And keeping the designations right, not just keeping them in the UGA, but with the commercial designations.
I just wanted to comment, though I wasn't here at the work-study, I did actually view the tape, and I'm in agreement with this, and plus, I heard that there was going to be more information forthcoming regarding employment and all of that, and I think, no.
I believe I was told that I would be getting some numbers that I had questioned, and I have not received any additional information.
Okay.
Mr. Bond, have we been able to verify, or do we have the capacity to verify those numbers that the county's provided us?
Well, I don't know that the county has provided any numbers to go along with the preferred alternative yet, and I don't know if and when they're going to do that, but we certainly have the ability to run some limited analysis, but in the past, we've contracted with the county's GIS person to run data like this, where we can do a purchase order and have them help us with that. So if the county isn't going to provide this, we can certainly go to the county and ask them to do a little bit of work for us, or see what we can do in-house with our limited GIS data system.
Well, I would assume, since, I mean, their preferred alternative shows certain areas that are inside, it should be a fairly easy calculation. I mean, they were telling us how many residential units and jobs were in each of our letter We could ask them, once again, what are those numbers, and what changed with, they've modified their proposal, so they should have those numbers, or what changed?
Our challenge is, and why I put it on tonight's agenda, is this body doesn't meet again before the county's next public hearing on this, which I believe is February 8. So we really kind of need to get our ducks in order here this evening, and if we're going to write a letter to the county, I think we need to give that direction here this evening, ahead of that public hearing, so that the county truly knows how we feel about this.
Well, if that's the case, and maybe we just take this one bite at a time, I would move that we would submit a letter of the city's interest in the platifications, and that we object to the complete elimination of what we have designated as D, that we think it should be entirely included, and that we object to having what we have identified as C to be excluded from the UGA.
I guess, I would hope that we could open this letter with appreciation for Commissioner Garrido...
Of course.
Coming and participating with us in a process with her staff.
I hope we're not going to wordsmith the letter here tonight, I just want the body to include our objections to, and you can frame it however you would like, just so long as our objections get communicated.
Is this a letter that, I would assume, I'm willing to put my name on, and I would assume all of our council is willing to put our name on?
Be happy to sign it.
But we're going, from a logistics standpoint, that means Nick or our attorney is going to need a day or two to write this letter, and then they're going to, you're going to need to swing by City Hall and sign this letter probably mid-next week or the end of next week, no, later, I would assume.
This letter that we're talking about, and we may need to vote as a council on each one of these areas, I'm not sure how we want to do that, but in addition to saying we want it to remain in the UGA, I think we also want to reference the zoning we want in that.
Right, no changes.
And my thought was, just taking one bite at a time, that if we can all agree on those two, then we can talk about some of these others and see what we want to take a position on those others, but we just do it piece by piece.
And I guess I would suggest that, why don't we start with A and work through the alphabet on these?
Okay.
And then with that, I just wanted to clarify my position on Area F. My comments were really intended to address the corridor of Mile Hill. There is that area that's to the northwest, which appears to lend itself perhaps to coming out and becoming urban low, but it's hard to know that without really knowing the land use pattern in that area.
So what I'm hearing is if there could be an option to shrink, but these letters that they've given us, they're proposing to remove all of these letters anyway. That's their proposal. So they're assuming...
These letters mean nothing to the county.
Correct, that's why I refer to it as what we have designated by letters, so we'd have to figure out the boundaries, but...
Did you make a motion early?
I did make a motion, but I didn't hear a second.
And that was to make, the motion Mr. Claussen made was, starting with, he wanted to, that our position should be that C and D should not be removed from the UGA, and they should retain their current zoning? Is that what I heard you say?
Correct. I'd second that.
Can I correct that, though? Because Bethel, the South Bethel area is zoned mixed use, and they're proposing to take portions of that to commercial, which I think, I don't think that you intended for that to stay in mixed use necessarily.
I would tend to, the mixed use, what we'd heard was, wasn't working?
Yes, and I could speak to that a little bit. Mixed use, it was a product of the 2006 comprehensive plan, and it has not worked. In fact, every use that was proposed for that zone required an ACUP, which is now no less than five grand. It is going to be abandoned in its entirety, and I think the county actually is planning on merging a bunch of commercial zones into one.
So the proposal then would be to take the mixed-use zoning and support the change to commercial?
That's fine.
I would like us to look at that, and they have certain areas that they are making commercial. The rest is urban low, which is five to nine homes per acre. It's a residential designation of five homes to nine per acre down Bethel.
I believe Mr. Claussen's motion, though, is we're saying we want C and D left alone, and we want commercial designation, not...
Mixed use.
Not mixed use, or?
Urban low.
Okay.
That's what I thought I was hearing.
Okay.
That's certainly the intent.
Okay.
I'll second that for more discussion.
So we have a motion and a second? Other discussion of leaving C and D, a letter that we're writing, leaving C and D, and the designation we're asking for is commercial in those corridors? Yes, Ms. Ashby?
I just want to be clear that the preferred alternative that we're looking at, it's, we want to make sure that they leave all of Bethel, south of Sedgwick, to the lighter interchange, or whatever that is, in. This map, I just want to make sure that that all stays in, because, again, these A, B, C, and D means nothing to the county.
I guess my intent is the areas that we have designated on our map...
Right.
Be included in our letter to the county.
Right.
We may have to say it differently than Letter D...
Put it in their language.
But the area that is in our Letter D will be included in that.
Right. Everything south of Sedgwick.
Correct.
On Bethel.
Correct.
That's currently in our UGA, we want to remain in our UGA.
Remain in our UGA.
Exactly, that's probably the best way. What is currently in the UGA along the Bethel corridor should remain.
Yes.
With the zoning from mixed use to commercial.
Okay.
That's a good way to describe it.
Mr. Dean?
I was just going to describe it as everything that's currently mixed use would become commercial.
Okay. I think we're all saying the same thing.
I think so.
Can we include more?
It's a test for our new attorney.
Yes.
What about E?
Okay, we've got a motion here dealing with C and D, and we're going to go to the others. So I think we should probably prioritize our requests in our letter, because I don't know, while we would like to be completely left alone, I don't know how realistic that is.
You know, I just wanted to add one thing. I think it's important to note that the mixed use had some development rights associated with it, that maybe there's a perception that that would be lost if it went to commercial. It's not the case. I think the county is proposing, and it's subject to ratification, but it's proposing that the same kinds of mixed use... that the same kinds of mixed use activities, both vertically or horizontally, with residential, with office, with retail, would all be allowed in that commercial zone. So I think there's some solace in knowing that if mixed use does go to commercial, it will allow for the same kinds of uses that exist in code today, just with a much easier permitting system.
So other comments on the motion on the table? Which is-
C and D.
C and D remaining in the UGA with commercial designation versus the mixed use designation. And really, it's not C and D, it's the Bethel Corridor, a current UGA south of Sedgwick. The property that's currently in the UGA stays in the UGA. The current property on Sidney Road remains in the UGA and has the same designations.
But you're going to have to be more specific, because if you were to simply say south of Sedgwick Road, that includes Phillips.
That works.
So it's going to have to be the south of Sedgwick on the Bethel Corridor.
Do you understand what the intent is?
Yeah.
Okay. We're wordsmithing up here.
Yes.
And we can provide an exhibit with our letter.
There we go. Okay. Any other discussion of the current motion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So is that, okay, is that our highest priority as Nick is drafting that letter? Is that what the intent was by-
I would certainly say yes, personally.
And does that need to be in the form of a motion that-
I think with enough head nodding, I don't know that we need that.
Okay. So where are we heading from here?
Let's go to A.
Okay.
And I would make the motion that A and B, that I could accept the county's preferred on that.
So we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion, I'm sorry, Beck, was that we would accept what the county is proposing to exclude them out of?
Yes. Yes. We have a motion and a second? Other discussion of that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I irritated that around you. And any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. It'll set you up for failure. Okay, we have E. Someone want to tackle E and what your thoughts are?
Well, I guess I'll lead with E. Tends to lend itself to one of the areas that would come out. And I'll say that based just on a character analysis of driving through the area, it has this rural look and feel. There are some developments that are vested there that will change that character a bit, but this is one that I think I could stand behind in the county's position.
Okay, was that a motion? To stand behind the position, county's position on Letter E? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Fred, seconds? And discussion, further discussion?
I'll just agree with Councilman Deener that driving through that area, it doesn't look like an area that's ripe for development. It looks like a rural setting and it, I could live with that.
Other comment?
I can go on record and say I'm fairly intimate with that properties out there and have been active with a citizens group on Phillips Road that was involved with the ULID that Weston Utility was proposing out there. And I will say that the citizens have been active out there and they have, many of them have requested to come out of the UGA. So I can support removing that section.
Any other comment? So the motion on the table is to remove Letter E? We are in support of the county's-
Accepting the county's proposal.
Accepting the county's proposal for Letter E. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. We're on, we're down to Letter F.
You know, I think left, left, F should be broken in two pieces.
It used to be, it used to be F and G.
Yeah. And I think that just because of the current nature of the Mile Hill Corridor, that I would prefer to say that stay, but the area that is north, I don't have any major heartburn with it going away. And that's just my opinion. I could go either way with the corridor, but I just think it's logical to keep the corridor intact.
Okay, was that in a motion?
Okay, I'll make that motion just so we can get it on the floor for discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, and so in essence, are you proposing then, we're removing, we're splitting F in two, to two parts?
Correct.
The northerly piece, just like it was?
Like alternative two.
Mm-hmm.
And it was F and G.
And we would retain what was previously G and accept the county's proposal on the northerly portion of F?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. You able to capture that, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, and in terms of priority, I know that C and D, it sounded like were the top priority, and so this is your next priority, I would guess.
That would be the next priority.
Number three.
So I have a motion. Was there a second on that?
What exactly was the motion?
The motion was that we split F into two parts.
Like it used to be our original map where you had F and G?
Mm-hmm.
And we would cede F as the county proposes it, and we would keep G in the UGA with the commercial designation.
On Mile Hill.
The Mile Hill Corridor.
Mile Hill.
Yeah, what I was going to say is I can support both of those coming out, if that's a point that we would want to negotiate, but I would not support the zoning change along Mile Hill.
This one.
Whether it's city or county, I would like to see it remain commercial.
So as a point of order, let's get your-
We did have a second.
We did have a second. Okay, so we are at discussion, so, all right? Sounds good, so.
Not really.
We should, go ahead, Mr. Deener.
You know, I'll just say that I think along Mile Hill Corridor, that should remain commercial. It does nothing but reverse a business climate if you change it to residential. That corridor needs horsepower. This takes away horsepower. So I'm in support of the city supporting that remaining commercial and F coming out.
Okay, so splitting it in half, as we discussed.
Splitting it in half, like we've predominantly talked about.
Mr. Clausen?
And I agree with Beck. I don't know that, you know, it's, I could support them both coming out, but by us prioritizing, I think we're kind of saying that, that if we get down to, well, we've got to drop one, that's our lowest priority is that corridor, but I think, again, logically, it should stay in the urban areas just because of the current way it's developed. That's my only feeling.
So we'll get to prioritization, I think, is the next step in this. So the motion on the table is to split F into two, the northerly portion supporting the county's alternative and remaining, that we would like the southerly portion or the Mile Hill Corridor left in with its current zoning. Is it the commercial zoning?
Commercial zoning.
Commercial zoning. So all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. So then, as Mr. Bond was pointing out, we need to probably prioritize. So Mr. Clausen?
To get it on the floor for discussion, I would move that we would develop the priority list with the D being number one, the C being number two, and whatever we're calling that Mile Hill Corridor being number three.
So I would second that.
Got the motion and a second? Further discussion?
I need it.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Now, who's writing this letter?
Our attorney.
We get the city attorney, and is it realistic that by middle of next week, that could be sent out to the council for review and then maybe by next Friday or so, the council's popping by and signing the letter and we're delivering that letter to the county?
The week, so we have a whole week's schedules. Could it be done by Friday or Monday? Do we see it by Monday?
By next Monday? Is it realistic to have it?
Letter? A draft of the letter?
Draft of the letter by Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, I just noticed something, and I hate to bring it up, but I think it's important. When we looked at that area G, and I hope I'm not out of order here, but when we looked at that area G, the area south of Mile Hill is the dog park. And if they want, if the county wants to pull that out, we should not object to that. So just as a footnote, and hopefully that's-
So the easterly portion of that, what we've created G, could be shrunk?
Yeah, that one large-
Southeast parcel of Long Lake and one, yeah.
I could bump that in with Area F, just for discussion purposes and-
It's pretty much open space and a park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so the goal is to have that letter done by Monday?
Draft by Monday.
A draft, in a draft form, for the council to review, and it's emailed out to all of us, and then by Wednesday, we would have, we would give you guys basically two days and by Wednesday, we would have that letter created, or Thursday, Thursday, Friday, you could swing by and sign that letter. We are to the end of our-
They're read at their February 8th meeting?
That's what I was going to say. There's a public hearing, I believe.
Five thirty PM on the eighth.
On the eighth, and I think we need it presented.
Okay. And you're looking at me. Let me look at my calendar, but I believe I can, is that a Monday night?
Yes.
Okay.
So you are the spokesperson, so.
All right. All right, we are to, we have here, council committee reports. We have committees assigned and-
Item L.
What's that?
Item L.
Retreat.
Yeah, yes. Council retreat, treat. Okay, we talked about wanting to have a retreat. Mr. Charlie added this item. We figured we better start talking about dates in our calendars and what we want to have for a format for that retreat. So I think it's important to include staff, and I don't know that if it's realistic tonight to get our calendars out, but maybe the clerk's office could do some sort of a poll and there's electronic means where we can send these things out.
Could we maybe have a discussion as to-
Is it a weekday?
Are we talking a weekend or, exactly, a weekday? How many hours are we talking about? Should we anticipate?
And how soon?
Yeah, and how soon.
For some of the newer members, the content of the retreat.
In the last few, it's just been the council, and the council and the mayor and kind of working on priorities and goals. We're all, we're a fairly new body here, and I felt it was important early on to have a retreat so that we're all, you know, traveling the same direction.
I completely agree.
I think next year, it might be more important to have this as part of the budget process potentially, but right now, I think, you know, we've got some new folks and I think it's just important that us and staff get together and, you know, talk about what our priorities are. I'm working with public work staff in the planning department on work plans. I'd like to bring those work plans and get buy-in from you guys, what we're going to accomplish, so that when August comes along and some hot topic comes along and Council Member Ashby says, but we've got to do this, but then I'm going to say, but so what are we not going to do that's on this work plan? Because there's only so much work we can get done. So that's kind of the purpose of what I'm seeing. What are the priorities? What do we want to get done, you know, in 2016? And-
Sounds like most of the day, really.
It's at least a half a day, if not a whole day.
Yeah.
And do we want to do it on a Saturday or a weekday?
Well, I'll start. It's easier for me on a Saturday if we do the whole day and it's okay.
I would agree.
I agree.
All right.
You know, I just have to work it in my calendar, whichever day, so.
Staff's all looking at me like, Saturday?
Your Honor, is that up for discussion, having staff at this, or should it be along the lines of what we've done in the past?
We haven't done it in the past. I see value in it, but, staff, how do you feel? I know you're not excited about Saturday, but how important is it?
At the risk of having to show up on Saturday, I think it's very important, because I think from staff's point of view, we don't, if we don't hear it, we don't know it. And it's really helpful to hear what are your priorities, to hear the tone of voice, the compassion, really what's driving you as individual city council people. And I think we can pick up those cues and really find out where you want to go over a period of time. And that would be helpful, I know for me, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I think that they would probably echo something along those lines.
Yeah, and I've done this before with city councils, and Saturday, I think, actually works better because we don't have a department that's getting away from us while we're away at the retreat, and so I think we can focus a little bit better and it's a good environment.
I think we should do it on Super Bowl Sunday since nobody's interested in watching the game.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Clausen, you raised your hand.
Well, I think, you know, it's important, and we have in the past, and maybe it was priority where we've had the staff there. Part of what I think is important, too, is for us to understand what's on their plate, because we know that the comp plan, for example, was a big thing, so let's not try to come up with too many things that's going to overload and divert attention. So I think it's a two-way street. I think it, and it may be that we need staff there for half the day and then we could battle it out for the remainder or something of that nature, in case somebody is interested in what's playing on Super Bowl Sunday or something.
So, and I think it's kind of important that we step away from here and potentially locations could be the Arnold Fire Station up on Tremont. They've got a meeting room back there. I know we could do it right here, but I think a change of venue could be beneficial to the process, and I would hope that we could find a couple dollars to have it professionally facilitated. And-
Well, I have two dollars.
Well, we have, just as an option, we have in the past, the fire station up on Tremont has a nice big-
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
... meeting room as well. Oh, I thought you meant the one up on Sidney, and I thought, ooh, that's cold.
No, 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 Station 31 on Tremont.
All right, then, yeah.
Which was our fire station at one time.
It was.
So, and I'll check with Chief Wright to make sure that it could be available to us. I know that, I think the clerk's office or someone could check in. We, it wasn't our Jurassic Parliament, Jurassic Parliament was less expensive than we budgeted for, so we've got some money there that I think that we could put to good use.
Good, yeah.
So Saturday and probably a couple weeks out, so let's, we'll have the clerk's office-
Thirteenth.
You're already firing dates out there.
Well, I happened to have in front of me, and you said two weeks.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth is a Saturday of a three-day weekend, so we may just want to think about that.
That's a holiday weekend, too.
Well, it is, but-
We could do it on that Monday. Kidding?
Twentieth?
If there's no real urgency, then the twentieth is as late as I'd want to go, really. I think it is important to get done, but-
Okay.
Twenty?
So we can all look?
Now, we're assuming that we can, one, get the facility, two, get the facilitator. Does anybody and staff have serious objections to that date? Okay.
What date is that?
February 20th? Your anniversary or anything we need to know about?
My anniversary is tomorrow night.
Okay, we're good then.
Well, let's do it tomorrow night, then.
That might work, too. The first half of the day has staff.
Still be good refreshments there, huh?
Release staff.
That could be an option.
After that, so.
Do we want to, as accounts, as council members, send the clerk's office proposed agenda items? It's going to be a kind of a planning.
Should we send them to you?
Send them to me. Certainly.
Okay.
So we're looking at the twentieth, then, is that?
The twentieth, we're looking on a facilitator and reserving a facility.
Let me just explain. I think if we send them to you, then you can vet them and maybe prioritize those and then send them on for-
Okay. Yes, absolutely. I'll do, I'm glad to do that.
Perfect.
Anything else on this item? It was easy, actually. Okay, on to committee reports. We just appointed those committees this evening. I think that our next council meeting will be voting on those, I understand. Do we need to vote on those? I'm not sure that we do. Voted on that. We'll let Clerk Ryanerson advise what we need to do when she gets back in the office. And I've got a quick, one item on my mayor's report, and it has to do with CENTCOM. And I sent in my first CENTCOM meeting last week, and the board's been working for about for the past year to create a standalone agency versus CENTCOM being operated underneath the county. We were at a decision point last week when, when I attended that first meeting between, they made a recommendation, actually, the recommendation which was approved, that it would become a Public Development Authority, or PDA. And I provided some documents to our new attorney to review and some background. If anybody else wanted them, more than happy to share them. I'll get them out to you. The legal research was performed by City of Bremerton's Roger Lubovic and South Kitsap Fire's attorney, Ken Bagwell. There's an execution date of April 5th and a resolution that was also provided, the attorney for review. Service agreements between the new PDA and the member agencies, which would be us, would be forthcoming, and that they're expected to be executed by May 3rd. One of my questions at that meeting was just the financial analysis. Are we saving money? And the, the projected savings is about $40,000 a year. And part of what I understand is going on here is we've got, it's a county agency, but yet we've got this policy board, and so why do we have these two layers of management? If we're going to have a policy board, then it should be a policy board and it shouldn't be underneath the county's governance also. So I got, that's what I got from one meeting, and I just wanted to share that with you that this has been going on for, this discussion's been going on for quite a while, and it's just about finished up. And our attorney has those documents to review, and there'll be a resolution coming back for, to us to, to vote on, and I just didn't want you surprised by it. So that's all I have this evening, and I don't believe any, none of our committees have met outside agency.
Yeah, except that today, the West Sound Alliance Working Group had a meeting, and I brought forward our desire to request $500,000 from our pedestrian path be moved up to the 2017-19 biennium. I, I presented that to the group so that anyone that would be going down lobbying their legislators would include that. And they, some of the other jurisdictions had some things they wanted us to promote for the legislators. So just that we had that meeting today, and we are moving forward to see if we can get that into a different funding cycle.
Along those lines, excuse me, I'm on the executive team for the State Transit Association, and we had our quarterly board meeting, actually today and tomorrow. And one of the things that we learned from the WISTA lobbyist team was that the legislature is going to be pretty reluctant to open that door for any changes, except there may be an opportunity for us sometime in February, and I'll try to get the exact date. They're going to be presenting their revenue forecasts, and the assumption is that it's going to probably come in a little stronger than what they had initially projected. And if there is new money, that it might be, a little different way of asking it is asking for maybe an additional $500,000 to be allocated this year.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure, and Mark, you need to pay attention now. They, the representatives at the West Sound meeting today were looking for, asked for 2016, and I was very clear that our ask is for 2017-19 biennium, that I didn't think that we could spend the money this year.
No, you would have to look at what the obligation date, though, is because of the bienniums. It might be a, if there's extra money, that might be a 2017-19 biennium because the 1517 biennium was the closed biennium, then it was the 1719, and then there was the 1921, which is where we're currently sitting right now. So I would just be specific on that.
My understanding, and again, I'll get more clarification tomorrow, was that it would be in the 1517 because the short session is normally, and Ellen, you might know this better, where based on revenue projections, they can tweak their.
A bit.
Their biennial budget.
Can they adjust the prior period and for the future period that is still remaining?
Yeah, so, you know, it may be sooner than we think.
And having it in that biennium, then there's the, you don't have to, I don't think you have to have that money spent, they could reappropriate. I mean, we've been pretty lucky on, you know, there's a certain amount of risk, but we've been lucky so far in a number of projects where if we didn't meet the June 30th, 2017, we were actually able to put it into the next biennium as a carryover. We did it with DeKalb, we did it with.
Well, the one thing that they suggested today is if you ask for it, you better be ready to spend it.
Yeah, and I was concerned about us asking for 2016. I.
2016, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, right. That's why I had suggested that.
Even '17 would be a stretch, but we might be able to.
Any other outside agency reports? Okay, staff reports. Mr. Dorsey, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yeah, I was, I guess I was requested to speak briefly on the FEMA resilience training that they had over at DEM. It was put on by FEMA. There was actually a pretty good article in the Kitsap Sun that spoke to really what that's about. So FEMA, the FEMA presentation for resilience is really based on two major earthquake events. Cascadia that everybody knows about, which is the big, you know, 8.6 for 10 minutes in the tsunami. The Seattle event, which was the new event, which was in the Seattle, or Bremerton Sun a couple, three weeks ago, really spurred a lot of emotion. You know, the New York Times article about Cascadia, most people knew about that, happens every 300 years. We're kind of coming into that, we're in that 300-year period. The Seattle event is like every thousand years, but it's got people really interested because the fault lines east-west and it goes right underneath Port Orchard in Bremerton. And so they're, you know, looking at these potential seismic events. And resilience isn't just bouncing back reactive. The key to resilience is it's also being proactive. And so a lot of the conversation had to do with the prior, which is to being more proactive. And so we broke into jurisdictional teams with a FEMA leader, and we talked about different sorts of projects. I put the downtown flooding, you know, being too low, let's just raise the city up 12 feet and we're good. That was a kind of a tsunami, global climate change condition that we'll deal with. The project that FEMA asked me to move forward with on the presentation, and then I'm actually going to be working with FEMA, is our EOC change. You know, a big part of this, the fault, whether it's Cascadia or Seattle, is the liquefaction zone, and they've had all sorts of maps that show where the liquefaction line is. And City Hall isn't in a very good position. So moving the EOC from this room, which will still be standing, but you may not have access to it, especially with utilities. I've been working with DEM for the last year and a half to try to get the EOC moved someplace, and at this point, it seems like the best option that we've looked at is our public workshop up in the industrial park. It's on solid ground. It has emergency generation power. It has the ability to store fuel, food. It has the ability to set up a tent city up there. It's got good freeway access, assuming bridges and overpasses are in place, but it's still a good location. And as long as our, we have fuel and we have copper phone lines, our SCADA system, which operates all the sewer and water, is still operable because we have emergency generators at each remote site. So it's a good location, and I'm going to be pursuing funding, hopefully through this FEMA process, because they thought it would score well, to try to basically take the upstairs, that's in the shop area there, close in a wall and just make it a habitable space and permanently set up our EOC. And I think it's important that we have an EOC that we actually have set up. Now, but the fire district up at Furcrest, they have got that back room, and it's set up, and they, whenever the wind comes up, they, they set up their EOC. They have fire staff that come in, and they're just operating it all the time for even small events. What happens at the city is we all took our NIMs, ICS training, eight, you know, I took it eight years ago, and I, I've been continuing, but a lot of people, they took it once and they've never been in an EOC. They've never had any experience with it. And we do a few drills every three or four years, and we'll pull out the tables and chairs, and nobody will really know what's going on. I think if we have an actual EOC, we can actually open up for certain wind events or flooding events, get people and staff used to how it operates, and have some actual, you know, on-the-job training so that, you know, hopefully we'll never have an event, but if we do, everybody's just not standing there going, well, I don't know what to do. So I'm really pushing to, to get some funding to make this happen. So that was that.
Thank you. Any other things to report on? Mr. Martin?
Just like to welcome Sharon Cates to the city and thank the mayor for including myself and other staff in the process. I also want to acknowledge that Rihanna Fernandez, our assistant clerk, is going to be moving to the city of Paulsboro, and I think you're aware of that. I shared an office right next to her for the last three and a half years. I never heard the lady have a crossword with anyone. I never heard her speak ill of anyone. Her ability to communicate with the public is stunningly well-done. Paulsboro is a very lucky recipient of this lady. I'm getting to the age where now I like to look at young people and, and feel that the future's going to be just fine, and with people like that, I'm really proud of her. Congratulations to her.
Mr. Vaughn?
Along those same lines, we actually hired a Paulsboro employee, which is our new associate planner. So if you happen to be in our office, say hello to Carrie Weaver, who is working on long-range planning issues, and we've already got a Parks Element draft now out to the Planning Commission, which leads me to my second point. The Planning Commission meetings have been moved from their traditional third Monday. They are now the first Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM, and that allows people to get home at a little bit more reasonable time and is a little easier for our volunteers. So, so our next Planning Commission meeting is, I guess, a week from tonight.
The second, February 2nd.
Second Tuesday? Thank you. Ms. Cates?
Yes, along the same lines, I would like to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council for this opportunity. I have been enjoying being a part of the labor and employment issues for the past nine months or so for the city, and my colleagues and I are very excited to be working with you and, and looking into the, the full scope of what this city is dealing with in the, on the legal side. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Clerk's office is a bandits' back room. Rihanna, do you have any, anything you want to report on? Other than congratulations on your.
I just wanted to thank everybody for the time I've spent here. I've learned so much, and I'm ready for the next step, and I plan to keep in touch with many of you, so I'm not going anywhere very far.
You know, I should add that one of the, the nice parts in my heart is her son actually ran for school treasurer and won. So he would come by and, he's a wonderful young man, and whenever he'd come by, whenever I go to a convention, you know, they have the giveaway things, so I always bring those back. So he was a recipient over time, each time he came in after school, of umbrellas and flashlights and keychains. So he's a wonderful young man.
And he's still saving up to buy you that Lamborghini in return.
All right. We are, we are to our second public comment period. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand and be acknowledged. Ms. Biddleton?
Good evening. I, I figure their gain is our loss, but good luck and welcome. I just wanted to bring forward some of our observations. I know that the Land Use Committee will be addressing the potential of a derelict building ordinance, and I listened to the last meeting and, and the different issues that were noted. I also wanted to add to that, that on Mitchell, we have two. On Stockton and DeKalb, and this might be a gray zone because potentially it's Kitsap County, I'm not sure, but on Stockton and DeKalb, the intersection, we actually have a building that is totally caved in, covered with a tarp. It's really a mess. And then also on Farragut, we have another derelict building that is covered in blackberries, and somebody's hacked in a trail to it. So I'm strongly encouraging that we develop something that gives us some teeth. And then also, there's been discussion about the lot that belongs to the city. I know earlier on, we were talking about making it a little user-friendly so we could use it in the interim, and I just wanted to bring that forward again, that I know there's a bunch of us that are watching to see if that's going to happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon?
I had several things, but now I'm having a blank out here. But my, my first issue is, we had a, I think it was a gentleman, maybe eight or nine months ago, that came and asked you to consider pulling out of the Puget Sound Regional Council and developing our own council on this side of the water. And every time I hear all of that we're going through, like the urban growth and, and it seems like we're really not a part of it, but we are a part of it. They're trying to tell us what to do over here, and I just think it's something that we should consider because they're the ones telling Kitsap County that they have to reduce the urban growth. My second issue was, I was wondering if we're being expected to reduce by the number of A through G areas, what are Bainbridge Island and Paulsboro and Silverdale being asked to lose in their part of the picture? Because we've, it's like we have been left out up until just recently of getting any good from our county as far as Silverdale growing away it did and getting the roads and the things that they have while we're sitting over here not getting a whole heck of a lot from the county. So the fairness issue, and maybe it's not something that you consider, but it's sitting out here, it's something that I consider. And I also hope that on your, I know that we're allowed to come to your retreat. I hope it is taped that, so that people understand what's going on at the retreat. I really think it should be here. This is a public building, and you have the facilities to make sure that everybody understands where you're coming from and to have it more public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Petro?
I want to thank each and every one of you for the work you've done on this urban growth boundary tonight. I think it's very important. We've needed this for years, and I do believe you have a litigation possibility for how they've acted prior to this current urban growth boundary, by when they approached us and said, we got to do North Kitsap first, and then we got to do Central Kitsap. And then when it came to South Kitsap, they said, oh, we got to do it all at once, and I think you would remember this. And we didn't fight for ourselves, and, and I hope you do, and I thank you for what you've done. And I want you to know that because most of you guys only see when people complain, but good job today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, you raised your hand?
Well, for once, I'm going to agree with Mr. Petro. I want to thank you guys. I know a lot of thought has gone into, you know, the process and what you're going to fight for and what you're giving up, so to speak. Um, I know a lot of thought has gone into, you know, the process, and what you're going to fight for, and what you're giving up, so to speak. Um, you know, I had a long conversation today with somebody at the courthouse or at, at the county. And, um, while it's not a done deal, it sure seems like it is. I was told that the public hearing, the last public hearing is February eighth, they plan to make a decision. The commissioners plan to vote on the tenth. So it's not like they're going to give anything that anybody says much thought. So I'd encourage to get the letters in as soon as possible. Um, they feel as though that they responded to the citizens' comments as far as Bethel was concerned. That's where the overwhelming number of comments came from, that's why they gave back what they did. But I hope that you guys stick to it. Um, thank you for that. And, uh, February eighth is the public hearing, and I hope that, um, everybody is there. And, um, show the support of the council and the city and, uh, South Kitsaps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to comment this evening? Mr. Anderson?
I, I too want to thank everybody on the city council. Um, it is absolute pleasure to, uh, to be in front of this group. Just say that. The, uh, the UGA, uh, back on Area F, I'm glad you, you brought up the dog park because if we pull that out of there, we should give back that, and you've already brought it up about, uh, putting the entire Bethel corridor back in, uh, south of Cedric Road. But the, the county's map shows that there, they carved out the area on the east side of Bethel, south of Cedar, down to Van Skiver. We, if, if it comes, becomes a matter of trading percentages of property, then take out the dog park and give us that back. The, this whole, Matt's right, you know, we, we don't really know what we're going to end up with when the county commissioners actually make their decision, whether this is just, uh, effort, futility, who knows? But the, the city council, the city of Port Orchard, needs to send a message. And it should be a very strong message that hopefully gets in the newspaper, that the city of Port Orchard is open for business. And regardless of what the county does, uh, cutting back the UGA sends a message to the world that, you know, we don't have the population and the employment here to support the UGAs we have. That's a terrible message right now when our county is starting to grow. We have our chance, finally, to, to have a better quality of life, that we have enough population to support our businesses downtown and everywhere in the city of Port Orchard. And then to have our UGAs cut back, sending that kind of a message is a terrible thing. So we need to come out strongly and say, regardless of what the county does, we're open for business. And, and please come into our city, we'll welcome you with open arms, and we'll help you get, get on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to testify? Or, excuse me, make a comment? No, Mr. Petro, I'm sorry, you already commented once, you only get to comment one time, so. But I'm sure you can be, you'll be back in two weeks. And we welcome you back. So we are going to go into executive session at this time. We're not planning on taking any, uh, action after that executive session, so we're going in to, for thirty minutes, we have a collective bargaining meeting, and it's pursuant to RCW forty point thirty point one four oh four. And, uh, so we're going in at eight thirty-five, and we'll, we'll come back out at nine oh five, I understand.